Rule four, please. Everybody stand, please.
On Tuesday, October the third, the meeting in the Shelbyville City Council Study Session is about to commence. Please be seated. Silence all cell phones and noise making device. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, this will return to a secure building. We have said if you have any business to conduct following this meeting, to do so within five minutes of the park, the building is forthcoming.
Thank you, sir. Let's have a seat. First thing on our agenda tonight is public comments. And I think Lisa told you, anyone who wanted to sign up, didn't have anyone, is that correct, Lisa?
I don't see anybody, no, sir. Sorry, I gotta get my agenda out here so I can make notes.
A lot. Staff reports, Lisa's gonna handle those tonight. And number one is consideration of the deputy city manager's development services. Lisa, with you.
Yes, sir. I want to tell everybody, this is a new section that staff has been talking about putting on here. Scott specifically requested an item on the agenda where he can give a city manager's report. Of course, he's not here the first night we put it on there, so, sorry. But anyway, it's gonna be for him, for staff, for council members. If they have a report they want to give for one of the committees that you serve on. Legal wants to give a report about anything, the mayor. To date, I'm gonna cover just a few items, and if the mayor's okay, I'll just take them all and just go right down the list. It's gonna kind of, this whole section will kind of evolve, so if y'all have any, you know, thing you want to add or take away from it, or you don't like it, just let us know and we'll move forward. The first item tonight was deferred last month. Last month, it was on the agenda as consideration of a deputy city manager, but it was deferred, and it's been changed to a staffing evaluation that's gonna be performed by M Task. I wanted to let everybody know that Scott has been in touch with M Task and Chuck Downham, our representative. They're getting together and trying to start to see what departments need that, how to move forward, to see where we're lacking in staff, what positions we might be lacking in, maybe where we have too much. So, that report is gonna take a few months to do. Chuck has estimated that you won't get it back until sometime in January, so, wanted to let you know that. M Task, it's not a charge, there's not any charge on that, because we already are with M Task. So, wanted to let everybody know that. The next item is the 231 North Business Park. I wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. We had a meeting, and, was it last week? Last Monday? And I think I have sent the quick claim deed out to everybody for the property. All the property was, it was voted on by the 231 Board to deed all the remaining property in the business park over to the IDB Board. There were actually two parcels. One was the remaining 27 acres that the IDB Board is working with Uncle Nereson, and the other one was an actual lot that has less than an acre, and it's unidentified as to who owns it at this time. But we had deeded it all over to the IDB Board, and they'll be taking care of it from there. So, that concludes all the property part of the business of the 231 Committee. Once all the financial stuff is finished up, then that committee will go away, be sunset. It'll probably still be January, though, till all the attorney's bills and all that kind of stuff can be tended to.
And Lisa, if I could, I'll add in on that. We will more than likely do, and this was actually a request of County Mayor Chad Graham, that when it comes time to basically say the business of the committee is complete, there are still funds owed by the county, because if you all are well aware of the money that you all sort of kept flowing. He just requested, he goes, "I think it would be best if we would do a quick agreement, both city and the county agreeing to that, if that money has not been finished, dissolving, though, basically, the committee, and agreeing to, this is how we agreed to separate those, or divide up the funds, and repay those funds back." That was one of the things that he did mention. And let me touch base on something that Lisa said, that little strange piece of property, that is a title issue that was there before we ever owned the land, and it's very small. There's really no one else you can give it to except a neighboring landowner, really can't do anything else with it. What we would have done in terms of a quick claim deed is, is if we ever had any title of it, you'd get what we own. Right, it's not a warranty deed, so, just letting you know what that difference is.
Okay, number three was the Drive Up Bank Building Request. That is, I think everybody's familiar with it, the little Drive Up Bank Building that is currently owned by Bedford County. At your meeting last month, you authorized the mayor to send a formal letter to Mayor Graham and to the County Commission, asking that they donate that piece of property to the city to serve as a trailhead and restrooms and a parking area for the overlooked project. And so, the formal letter has been sent to the mayor and requested that he put it before the commission and then get back to us as soon as they, you know, make a response to it. Then the next item was the North Britton Street Drainage Project, and Buck is gonna give us an update on that. I saw him over there today, so he's got an up-to-the-minute update.
He's still waiting.
Yeah.
Is this on? Okay. I think everybody's seen that the construction is underway. Some of the things that we ran into, anytime you dig in the ground, you never know what you're gonna find. We've had a few things that these all get.
They did not. I have a copy of it, Buck, and I will send it all out to everybody.
Okay. Right now, we always figured the hardest part was gonna be next to the building. You know, we've had, when they first started, their equipment fell through, what was there existing, so, it was time to do it. So, with what we have right now, Will is kind of giving out a sheet, and he's gonna give it to everybody. We're not asking for an increase in the budget yet, until we see what the sections look like going away from it. We think, right now with what's going on, that we can offset some of the things that we were gonna do that would be a cost savings for us, so, we don't anticipate that we're over budget right now. But if this situation persists, we would like to do it all at once and not come every month and ask for more and more. We want to just get away from that. We want to make one budgetary request after we see what else is existing.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is the local option sales tax. I just wanted to inform the council that we did receive a letter, a response back from the county on the letter that was authorized by council a few months back. And that item will be on your business agenda, if there should be a business item on there for you to take whatever action you see fit on that. Then the cemetery issue, it's not listed on your agendas, but I wanted to clear that up. I misspoke at last month's meeting about the cemetery rates. They took effect immediately after the passage of the resolution. Some of them, you know that, I talked to you about it, but I just wanted to make a statement in an open meeting so that it was clear. That was my mistake. It was clearly stated on the resolution that they took effect immediately, and so that's what happened.
Lisa, could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
For those that possibly were grandfather, I don't know if there's such thing, but those that maybe pre-arrangements have been made, are they permitted to be grandfathers?
My understanding is, if they've already paid, then they paid in at the price that it was at that time, they're fine. This is only, takes effect on anybody that purchased following September 14th.
If the plot was purchased, if they had a pre-arrangement with somebody else or anything else, and the plot wasn't purchased at that time, the plot, they're not grandfathered in because they didn't buy the plot yet.
So, like if you made pre-arrangements at a funeral home, but there's no plot reserved for you, then you would have to pay the new cost. All right, does anybody have any questions on any of those items?
That letter is received on my best, the 29th, by the way, from the county. That's when we received it, the 29th?
Yes, sir. And it's been forwarded out to everybody. Anybody have any questions on any of that? No? Okay, ma'am. Ready, move on.
Discussion item, number one, historical marker installation and occupancy agreement, Lisa?
That is an item that you all have voted on previously. It's that historical marker that they requested to put over in front of Pope's and to honor a Charles Davis. We all, y'all voted to allow them to do that. The problem was that when they got talking to the Tennessee Historical Commission, they sent this document that's attached and in your packet about releasing reliability and stuff like that when they're installing the marker. And I, the mayor needs to sign it, and the council needs to give him permission to sign it, because it's a little bit, you know, more entailed, it's standard. Most of the time when something like that is done, you're gonna get a release of, you know, liability for them to do their work. But I wanted to make sure council saw it, and so it's in your packet. So, I'll ask that you read it and look over it and know what the mayor's signing, and then it'll be on the business meeting next week for y'all to give him permission to sign.
Is that gonna be a flat on the sidewalk, do you know, or is it gonna be upright?
I think it's gonna be an upright, oh, Buck.
Buck, yeah, it's gonna be a sign, and it's gonna go parallel with Main Street, so you can see it from the sidewalk and possibly see it. It's gonna be, I think, 42 inches, so it's a good sized sign.
And they are coordinating with Buck on the actual placement of the sign, so.
That's in front of the little garden spot there, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The second item is Shelbyville-Bethford Partnership Funding, Lisa?
This is really just a report also. You had asked for some additional information from the partnership about funding, and that was provided to council after our meeting on 14th. I sent it. It's also was included in your packet tonight, so you should have it on your iPads. And we have a meeting scheduled with the partnership board for October the 12th for further discussion.
Okay. Number three is the de-annexation request, Tax Map 069 Parcel 25.07. Wally, can you fill us in on that, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So, we received an application for de-annexation, which means basically somebody is in the city and they would like to be outside. So, video an overview of what we're talking about. If you look at the slide here, it's this part in the blue, it's about 1.4 acres. If you see any sign here, R means in the city, O means outside the city. The reason why I'm showing this is usually, when you have a de-annexation application, there's no specific requirement in the state law or our city regulation. However, the best planning practice is to look at, is it surrounded or not by city property? And if it's sound by city property, how many? And is it needed for the expansion of the city or not? And I'm moving to the next slide here to video an idea. This property is within our city boundary area. So, back, I believe like 20 years ago, it was annexed, and ever since, it has been in the city.
Can you go back to that last one, can I ask a question? Oh, the two lots on either side are outside the city limit?
Yes.
But the other ones around it are inside. Do utilities go across that property?
This one?
Are the utilities on the property that they're asking to be de-annexed?
The only thing I know about, we don't have sewage. We have a sewage, a city thing. Everything else is, I believe, city.
But it's going to planning commission, right?
So, what's going on here, this was annexed back about 20 years ago, and ever since, I'm sure you're all familiar, all this area here, this whole global matter, the global matter has like full defined phases. All the pieces of land on the outside are in the city, including that huge one, which is gonna have like, say, 100 plus new homes. So, in absence of an actual law requiring how to deal with the annexation or de-annexation especially, usually that's what you look at. You look at, and this is basically from the end, I can't land in this back. You need to know if it's in the expansion path of the city or not. You need to know if there's any natural boundary between the parcel and the city. In our case, of course, there's no natural boundary. So, the whole idea, I'm not gonna go over them now, I'll go over them when I go to the planning commission, and it is actually, does it actually make sense or not to be annexed? That being said, I would just like to point out, if I go back on the slide here, that property, as far as you know, when it was annexed back about 20 years ago, it didn't have any buildings, so it was never developed. And my understanding is, the applicant would like to combine this piece of land with the other one here to the south side, because he owns the two. We tried to actually recommend to the applicant to consider annexing that piece of land, which is outside the city. After that, he could combine the two. He was not keen on doing that. So, what I'm asking you now is just, we need to do more consideration and evaluation, so if we are requesting it to be sent to the planning commission to have more of a discussion. Again, there are two sides to that situation. One of it is, it doesn't appear to be something that the city should be annexed. However, it has been there for 20 years and there was no development. So, we need to work on it a little bit and just consult with the planning commission, or come back to you after that with a recommendation. With that, just I'd like to open the floor for discussion, if you have any questions.
Is this just like we have when we have an annexation, it has to come to us first? You're assuming that, because they're in the law on de-annexing?
So, basically, it's the same process. So, now, if you see that it's a good idea just to consider all the aspects, you send it through the planning commission, during the planning commission discussion, we'll have a recommendation when we come back to you.
But if we don't send it to the planning commission, then it's not gonna be?
Yes, exactly.
And this is the first, do you know, where somebody had asked for that, or?
I know, I know like four or five years ago, I'm not quite sure, there was a similar one. And Lisa can help me out here, she'll call.
There was one not long after I joined the city. I can't remember what the cause of it, but I believe it was out on Railroad Avenue, maybe somewhere like that. And it was approved, but we handled it at that time the same way we do annexations. Come back to you through a resolution.
Thank you. Hey, Wally, we may need you here in a minute. Well, it's the old business, we've got resolutions. Second and final reading, public hearing. Number four is a resolution adopting a plan of services for an area proposed for annexation. The territory is the 32.36 acre tract of land located at 2764 Highway 231 North, on the east side of Highway 231 North, and referenced as Bedford County Tax Map 059 Parcels 14 and 1401, to be annexed by owner consent to be incorporated within the boundaries of the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee, and owned by the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee.
I don't believe there's been any changes to that.
Mayor, this is basically the land adjacent to the home. It's going to the planning commission, first you go into the planning commission, and the first dating by council. No changes, and the whole idea, once it's annexed and we have that kind of services included, then we can actually wait until we get the concept about what will happen after that and develop the settlement. And there's a lot of opportunities for future subdivision completed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Wally on that one? Okay. Five is a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owner, incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee. This property is the 32.36 acre tract of land located 2764 Highway 231 North, on the east side of Highway 231 North, and referenced as Bedford County Tax Map 59 Parcels 14 and 1401, owned by the city of Shelbyville. Same piece of property, right? Okay, questions on that? I think we discussed that on the first reading. Anybody have any questions there, for Wally? Okay. Ordinances. Second and final reading in the public hearing. Number six, an ordinance for the Shelbyville City Council to approve the reinstating the Creekview Villa's PUD bulk regulation shown on the PUD site plan as recommended by the Shelbyville Municipal Planning Commission, as recommended by the Shelbyville Municipal Planning Commission and repeal any ordinance or part of any ordinance in conflict thereof or herewith. Any questions for Wally on that?
Where are these located?
Wally?
It's, it's probably to be, if you go on South Cannon, it will be on the east side. And when we discussed it, it went basically back in two thousand thirteen. There was unclearity about some, I would say, like what's done by the staff at that time about changing the part. And the applicant never knew what happened and it came to our attention about a couple months ago when they knew that they already built most of the site. That the part that was used to build it doesn't exist anymore. That's why we were just reinstating what used to be the case in two thousand seven, no change, it's okay with us.
That's condos on the left, right there, flat street.
Yeah, before we get to Brooklyn area, you know.
So, the only thing that they added is not that five plus empty, however, they were a part of the part that includes that. So, nothing really being applied for.
So, the plug was there and then some type of plug was removed, which puts it back in under regular zoning regulations. Well, the problem is the property they got now, it wasn't designed to, you really need the plug.
Yeah, exactly.
It's somewhere like, but-
And that's why we didn't ask for following the new agency cards. This part back then was applied for under putative regulations. So, it would be totally under respect to ask for that.
How many is going up?
I think now, as we speak now, there's a bill, thirty units, C zero, the ones that are not, just five, that will be done in the future.
Any other question? Thank you, Wally. All right, number seven is an ordinance of the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee to approve the rezoning of thirty-two point thirty-six acres of the city of Shelbyville located at twenty-seven sixty-four Highway two thirty-one north immediately to the west of the city of Shelbyville Municipal Airport and referenced on tax map fifty-nine fourteen and fourteen oh one from Bedford County, A one agricultural and forestry to Shelbyville Commercial, C two, and repealing any ordinance in conflict herewith. When we look into that property, just changing the zoning, right? Any question there? Anyone? All right. Number eight is an ordinance to amend the adopted budget ordinance as amended of the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee various funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, the period ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Okay, do you have any questions for our treasurer, Ms. Parker?
I don't think there's been any changes to it since first reading.
No changes.
No changes, okay. Anyone? Okay, we're good. All right, new business. Ordinance, uh, first reading. An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Shelbyville related to the city council meeting and the publication requirements. Andrew?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've actually mentioned this before and we had to push this back until October. The first section of your municipal code has requirements, been in there for years, that public notice of all your meetings, whether that's a study session, whether it's a regular meeting, whether it's a special call meeting. They're supposed to be published in a newspaper of general circulation designed to give at least twenty-four hours before the meeting. There's a couple of problems with that. One, the notice of a public meeting twenty-four hours is not sufficient unless it's an emergency like that. But number two, of course, now with all the changes in the newspaper, it makes it very difficult. And Lisa can speak to what her timing requirements are now. But we would like to remove that because your, the Tennessee law that talks about noticing that you have to give adequate public notice of your meetings doesn't actually require the public notice of the meeting to be in the newspaper. Your code says that. Now, with a caveat, there are plenty of things that the state requires us to do. If we're passing a certain kind of item, it has to be published in a newspaper and usually quite a bit of time involved. So, don't think this means we will not be publishing in the newspaper. We will be publishing in the newspaper. But it takes out this requirement and the biggest thing that it probably helps us with is if we need to call a special call meeting and we want to give seven days. I mean, we can't even meet that time. If we need to do something, take seven, five, seven days, which we thinks it's adequate time to get public notice of a meeting out to folks, we can't even meet it now with the newspaper. Lisa has to have the information to them on Monday?
Yeah.
Publication on Wednesday?
Monday at eight AM to have publication on Wednesday, which is, you think, you know, well, Monday and then they're publishing on Wednes-, or the paper comes out on Wednesday is not bad. But like this meeting tonight, I can't publish your full agenda in the newspaper like I used to. Because after this meeting tonight, if I get it in the newspaper on Mon-, it, on, it will not grant until Wednesday and then you meet on Thursday. So, it doesn't come out, the paper doesn't come out in time with that just one time a ye-, or one time a week, you know?
And that's truly not adequate public notice. Once again, I wanted to make the difference. And, and you all are well aware of the change that there has been to the open meetings act this year about publishing the agenda. The agenda has to be published and they tell you it's okay, you can publish it on your website. It does not require it to be in the newspaper and you gotta do it forty-eight hours in advance. I want you to remember, there is a difference between a public notice of a meeting. Your regular meetings, your study session, we don't have to public, publish the agenda to publish a notice of a meeting. You could just say, the Shelbyville City Council is gonna be meeting in regular session this day of time. And twenty-four hours notice is not enough time. That's not how we do it. And so, we generally publish those more in advance of your regular meetings anyway. So, people just know what your standing beings are and we'll be publishing your agendas online, just like the state law says.
Which I'm already doing. Now, yeah, now I put a notice in the newspaper, the city council will meet such and such a date. And then after that, I put a full agenda of this meeting will be available online forty-eight hours prior and put our website address in the notice. So, that gives them, you know, plenty of time and we're already putting, I've just kinda made it a habit of trying to put all of our agendas online at least forty-eight hours before meetings, even though we're not really required except for just this meeting and the commission, planning commission meetings. But just as, you know, to try to get into the habit of doing it, I'm trying to do it with all meetings.
So, what we would like to do is to take this out primarily for those special cases where you all need to have a special call meeting because it's very difficult to meet this. And I don't like special call meetings, certainly not going, you know, unless it is an emergency. And we've done that one time since I've been here and that was when the flim collapsed. And we're like, everybody get down to the fire hall and we'll ratify whatever we do at a special call meeting. We didn't have a choice. So, unless it's an emergency like that, I like to give people, I feel safe at five and seven days notices. And we, it just, the timing's kinda bad on that. It takes us so long now to do that. Particularly if it happens like on a Tuesday. And so, okay, I can't publish it, I can't tell them until Monday, they don't publish it till next Wednesday. You wind up having almost two weeks to get to have a special call meeting because of that. Once again, that doesn't mean we won't publish, that your agenda is gonna be online. And then, just remember, there will be plenty of things that we have to publish no matter what. Your budget stuff, zoning, all that stuff, your public, uh, public hearings, they all have to be. I mean, the state law is very specific on those. It's still in a newspaper or general circulation, we have to do. So, we'll just have to work around those things as best we can. Two other things that we want to change, it also mentions the radio and y'all can decide if whether you want to keep the radio in on it or not. We need to officially adopt Robert Tools of Orders. We've never actually, it's not in writing. We need to do that in order for you all to change your agendas with the new change in the state law. And number three, I need to just change one oh two because we're still meeting at City Hall. So, we need to change it to down here. So, that's what your ordinance seems to say. Okay. Any questions?
Discussing, uh, information, anybody have any questions about that? And radio will be up to us as far as-
If you want to take it out or not, it's still-
Are we still doing that, Lisa?
Uh, I've, I've gone back to doing that. I hadn't been doing it because I didn't know about it, but since, uh, the new laws, I've gone back to sending it out on the radio.
That is not a problem. They don't have that lead type of information there's out there. So, that's up to y'all, y'all will leave it in there.
Are you doing, what stations?
Shelbyville now, can I put it on there?
I haven't been doing it on any of that. Whatever the local station is, I sent the notice to them.
You're do-, you're doing it on the FM stations, right?
Yes, I believe so, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm not as worried about the news. Absolutely. Sure we got it there.
Thank you so much. Resolutions, uh, ten, a resolution of the city of Shelbyville, Tennessee authorizing a grant application with the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation for a twenty twenty-four about Firehouse Subs Grant.
This is, um, an resolution to authorize the fire department to submit a grant application with Firehouse Public Safety Foundation for the Firehouse Subs Grant. We've applied for it before, but I don't think we got it the last time. It's been several years ago. Matt's here, you wanna come up and tell him what you want to do with it? It is a hundred percent, um, grant, so there's no local match if we do receive it.
Yes, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Firehouse Subs has some equipment from the, in the regions that they have sold. We've been encouraged by the honor of the new store, which is here to try to apply again because we've been unsuccessful in the past. And, uh, so they have, uh, they try to help you with smaller equipment purchases. I think it's a hundred thirty thousand dollars, um, which, I don't know, for us, it's small. But, so we, we've applied this time, uh, or we're asking for permission to apply this time to, uh, be able to have, uh, a UTV that we currently do not have in the department to help with our YLM, our EMS, or public events, river access, those types of things. And, uh, and it's not budgeted in our whole budget, but we're asking permission for them, uh, to submit it to them. And then it'll be a hundred percent.
Much, got a dollar amount yet?
I do. I've got it right here, I'm sorry. It is twenty-seven, I'm sorry, let me find my paper. Twenty, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and forty-two cents. It's a twenty twenty-three Ranger XP one thousand UTV, UTV three seater. Twenty-seven nine seventy.
It's under, it's a state contract, other applies. So, with a colonial motor sports.
So, you, you have applied for that. Okay, but were you successful before? Did you say?
No.
We, well, I think we've, since I've been here, we've done it maybe four times. And we didn't do it last year because we've been unsuccessful and you never, you would never hear back.
Right.
Why would you be unsuccessful? What are they looking for?
Trying to narrow that down. Only thing I can say is that now that we actually have a Firehouse Subs here in Shelbyville, that the owner encourages us.
That won't fire protect you. I will say-
All publicity.
All publicity.
I will, I will say that I did read up on it when I was preparing the resolution and it does say that the closer the, the Firehouse Subs are to you, the better your chance is at getting it.
Very good.
In no uncertainty, you know, in similar words to that, it said that. So, I think we might have a better chance this year. Also, I encourage everybody to round up when you go to Firehouse Subs because the money, that's what, that's what it goes to.
Another plus for having a-
And they've been really, I mean, uh-
Yeah, they're real nice.
Giving them items to display, they really have them.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. They're good. Business items, uh, number eleven, certificate of compliance, Main Street Wine and Spirits, Lisa.
Um, this, y'all have seen these before. Um, when liquor stores, new liquor stores open up, they're required to file for a certificate of good moral character. We do a background check on them and then that information comes to y'all, it's in your packet. The background check came back good. This particular one is not for a new liquor store, but Main Street Wines and Spirits at six thirty-three North Main Street. And these gentlemen are attempting to purchase that. And once the council approves it next week, they do, then I'll send it on to the ABC and they will pick it up from that.
Questions? Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Twelve is e-payment services agreement and application with Point and Pay LLC Codes and Planning. Kay?
Yes. This is an e-payment service agreement and application with Point and Pays, as you said. And they'll provide electronic payment processing for codes and planning. That's in-person credit cards and online payments. Last December, the council approved a proposal from Bradley Software for online permitting for codes and planning. And Point and Pay, uh, works in conjunction with them and that's their, uh, preferred vendor. I got the form out and the initial term after I was talking to Ginger about it is for three years and, you know, anything over a year needs to come to council. And, uh, down at the bottom under economic impact, I put my understanding is the initial implementation cost of the city is two thousand dollars with no monthly fees and the per transaction fee of two point five percent will be paid by the customer. So, my understanding is very minimal impact financially to the city. It's kinda like at City Hall, we pass the credit card fee to the customer.
Right. That's good, no monthly fees. Okay, the next item, Kay will ask you again, merchant processing application and agreement with Card Connect LLC Parks and Recreation.
This is similar, except it's the new software at Parks and Rec. They did a purchase order back in August for a new software, um, called Breakfast, I think. And this, this does the electronic payments, both in-person and online. The initial term of this one also is three years, so it needs to come to the council. They had to have upfront cost of equipment. They may know more about it than I do, but it's about eleven hundred dollars for both. There's no regular monthly fees, but there could be some per occurrence charges, like if there's, um, rejects or chargeback fees. But for the most part, customers will pay the per transaction fee in that. Added Parks and Rec is three percent that is passed to the customer.
Question on that, Mike? Any questions on that? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kay. All right, number fourteen is Mike, inspection and maintenance agreement for the skate park. Do you have to test everything, Mike?
We're younger, baby. When we got the grant and added to the skate park, it looked really fun. But, uh, my wife was there and, uh, she's better at diagnosing things like that than I am. So, I, I did not get on that, flip or anything. American Grant Company is the company that the city first bought the, uh, the first equipment from. And also when we got the grant, we finished the part of the equipment from them. They, um, now have concrete equipment also, but then they pretty much just switched like the metal equipment, which is what we have. Uh, every five years or so, you should repaint the, put it out there and say the gold, uh, part that they actually stayed on, that's a textured surface and it needs to be done every, you know, five years or so. After we budgeted for this, they told me that we could do it every year for five-year contract with them. They would paint it- we could do it every year for five-year uh, contract with them. They would paint it during that time and they'd come every year and instead could make sure it was going to stay, make sure we were good and handy, uh, it just shares the liability. Uh, if anything were to go wrong, then ask them or something. So recommend that we do the five-year uh, the five-year program and we need to resurface it this year. It looks strange to do under this contract. I did in another five years, but actually pay more just to resurface it uh, in five years now and in five years that we will in five-year contract. So it's the best way for us.
Questions?
And I did not get on this. I look at it, I watch the.
Any questions for the dolphin? Thank you, Mike. Okay, surplus items, Lori, you have any?
Second. We have a awful lot of everything. Um, we'll look at several items. A two thousand two garbage truck, a nineteen ninety-five road tractor, three mowers, a nineteen eighty-nine Ford tractor, a rotary cutter and four engines that um, they have pulled out of vehicles. Um, that is, all those items, we would like to request a surplus on GoDeals.com. Um, next, we would like to request to surplus by means of disposal of scrap value only. And these are two police cars that were wrecked units that we retained for parts in the insurance settlement and we have pulled everything we need off of them. So they are basically a lot of metal that we just need to haul to the scrapyard.
Okay.
And then last on the surplus is in May of this year, you all approved surplus obsolete emergency equipment, police department for us to destroy it, which is normally what we do, but, and we haven't done it yet. We're just waiting for a free day, I guess. But anyway, Petersburg Police Department contacted um, Major Mathis and they are still running some of the equipment that is technically off the league. His email, um, it was uh, Matthew Griffey from Petersburg. I'm unbelie requests any police equipment that your department has that you could donate uh, for use on our fleet vehicles and he likes radars, cages with all brackets. My department is growing as is our fleet, but we are a very small department with a very small budget. Um, any and all equipment will be solely used to help outfit my fleet for my officers. He's requesting any piece parts they could use before we destroy what's left. So I, I just wanted to clear that up on this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that, folks? All right, purchasing and bid items, we'll move on to that. Number sixteen, emergency status, price increase for a public works road tractor for San Andreas. Approved in fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Yes, sir. Last October, a year ago, you all approved um, the purchase of a road tractor for our sanitation of the solid waste department in the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and five dollars and eighty cents. September eleventh, we were contacted by Cumberland and we were told we have a three-day window to make a decision. Um, our truck that was ordered a year ago was finally assigned a build date by International for the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Well, with that assignment of build date came the twenty twenty-four new standard emissions. So because of the new mandatory standard emissions that go into second twenty twenty-four fields, the manufacturers requiring often see statewide contract purchases to shift to the new contracts, which will need to affect September first, which included the cost of twenty twenty-four new standard emissions. So our options were to one, adjust to the new contract retaining our twenty twenty-four build date, staying on um, at a new price of one forty-two, two hundred, twenty-four. This includes the new emission standards and it also leaves us up to a twenty twenty-four model. Second option was to cancel the order with no penalty and start all over in the ordering process and lose our place in line for a build date. Our third option was um, any orders canceled after the three-day window would receive a five thousand dollar cancellation fee. So city manager, um, Collins declared an emergency status and told us status and told us to um, send them a purchase order for the difference of nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. So I'm bringing this as an emergency status because it was too soon to get it on your September fourteenth agenda, but we haven't made a decision before end of day, September fourteenth, for your meeting that night. That's what we've done. Um, I will say, as far as the additional funds, a budget amendment, I wrote on, put on this staff summary, a budget amendment may be required, but I know Buck had a savings on the trailer and something in the area, column area. So those are all in the capital fund, so.
How much was that?
I feel like we have this nine thousand covered. I meant to look before I came.
I thought the column area was eighty-two thousand, might be a hundred thousand in there.
Yes, and we had to pay for the concrete, the bit placement.
We did the concrete too, so that was out of that.
But it wasn't eighteen thousand.
No, no, because there's still landscaping that has to go.
Yeah.
Thought you could be close to it.
I meant to look this up, I apologize. Um, but between the trailer savings and the column area savings, I think we have it. And also, you all approved an additional five thousand, I think last, or in this budget amendments for uh, plotter and planning and we only ended up needing seven hundred and something, five thousand. So there's over four thousand there.
So you can find it.
They gotta get places.
You can find it in places.
And if we get short, we can just take it out of books, probably.
Yeah.
They told me before the maiden, then they are.
You all know the vehicle woes are still happening.
Any questions on that?
This does not do anything to the twenty twenty-four build date. I mean, it doesn't.
It keeps, it keeps our first quarter build date, yes. We'll still have a truck hopefully before June thirtieth.
If we want to cancel it, probably would have been twenty-five.
Yeah, we would have totally lost our place. And it took us fifteen months. Build that.
Those built to US, Buck?
Mexico.
Okay.
And I'm not sure we're crazy about twenty twenty-four emissions, but.
Have to do what's to do. That's federal standard, federal standards, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we have no control.
Anyone to see. I have no confidence.
Any other discussion on that? Thank you for trying to work through that, Buck and Lori, everybody. Scott, yeah. Now you've got a recommendation for RFQ for wayfinding signage, master plan downtown?
Yes, sir. And we received RFQs um, on September twenty-eighth was the closing day for submissions. We had two submittals, a company out of Austin, a company out of Westchester, Pennsylvania. The committee that Scott is taking this, they have those proposals now and they're filling out their evaluation. Matrix says, he wanted this on the agenda tonight because he wants this to be our next week's agenda and he's, we're going to submit a recommendation to you all first of the week sometime next week.
There'll be signage that points to different things in Shelbyville that allow.
Yes, sir.
Signs that'll have say Lynchburg this way or this that way. And then we're talking about, somebody had asked, and we may add to it later on, Scott and I talked about it. Uh, somebody couldn't find the walking horse celebration grounds during the walking horse celebration because it wasn't listed on GPS or find it. So we're looking to work with Warren Wells and them and try to get signage for that too. They pay part of it and I would see they can help with it. But it's gonna be around the square? Is it gonna be in other places outside the square too?
This is a master plan for the city's wayfinding signage, so I'm assuming it can branch out away from the square as well.
Okay.
How many are there? How many, how many are they, are there going to be?
Signs? Oh, this is, you're, what this is, is qualifications for professional service, architectural service, to come up with a master plan. This is strictly professional, yeah, this is strictly the professional services to develop that plan.
So the design of the signs and where the signs will be located and all those different things, that's what we're talking about.
And placing?
That's yet to be determined. With the RFQ for professional services, you, you normally select your firm based on qualifications. Then, then you negotiate prices. And hopefully they'll come back with that next week. I'm, I'm not sure what is coming.
Okay, so a closing date for submissions, September twenty-eighth, but it's on the agenda. Okay, so it's on the agenda next Thursday. When will all of the information get to the council?
Professional services, anytime we hire engineer, architect, um, architecture services for the city. Any of those are covered by TCA. Technically by TCA, you don't even have to do RFQs, really. I mean, we don't for when it's, but um, we have adopted the practice probably the past ten years that we let RFQs for all these professionals to submit based on whatever um, project it is. Um, this one, um, and I'm not sure if this is part of downtown grant.
It, it is. Um, I was gonna cover that. It is this and the downtown informational kiosk. The downtown improvement grant that we got for the downtown merchants to improve their facades. This is the city's portion of that. As part of that grant, the city was required to do some sort of an improvement also. And this is the city's portion of that. Um, the city was gonna get a portion of that grant to go towards this and then us pay the remainder of that out of the um, hotel motel money. But we had twenty applicants for that grant, so when we got so many, in order to allow as many as possible to participate, the city kind of turned their part of the grant over to them, so it would spread further. And we had twenty apply and we funded eighteen. Of those eighteen, we had one withdrawal because um, it was the Habitat store. And so they moved, so they withdrew theirs. So that amount of money went back into the pot. So the city will have some funds from that grant when everybody else is paid. There are, of the eighteen that were funded, the one drew, withdrew, and then there are seven that have not completed. If y'all go around the square, I was up there today. It looks, it looks fantastic. I mean, the painting, especially like the coffee break and the salon next door to it, all of it looks great. Um, so, but there are some, I think there are seven, as I said, that are in the process, are trying to get theirs completed and um, South Central Development District is, you know, monitoring this or administrating it or whatever that's called. And um, they're anticipating that everybody should be finished by November fifteenth. But this part was what the city stated that they would do as part of that grant. Go ahead, Kay.
I was just gonna say, I, I spoke with uh, Sarah Elizabeth who's opened this grant.
Right.
And the professional services cannot be part of the grant money. Only signs can be. So this RFQ part, that would have to be city funds entirely. In the grant, there's twelve thousand dollars for signs, twelve thousand one seventy-four oh two. Three thousand of that is city match, nine thousand's from the grant. So what I would suggest, and I think I said this to Lori last week, but I would suggest use the grant for the signs up to twelve thousand one seventy-four oh two. Anything more than that that signs cost will be on the city and the professional services would all be on the city. So anything in excess of the twelve thousand is gonna be a hundred percent city funds.
I know, but we have no figure on to as to what anything is.
You will have, you will have. Professional services, you cannot let invitations to bid based on price. You cannot, you're not supposed to, um, it's not all about price and professional services, it's about qualifications by state law. Now, if they were totally ridiculous in their pricing, we would go to the second one. In this case, we only have two, but anytime we bring professional services to y'all, whether it's Neil Schaefer doing the, the river or Richard Smith, Richard Smith's doing the STP, was my STP anymore, the Fairfield Pike project. There's always, they're, they're negotiating before, he'll, if we bring this back to you, yes, there will be a price.
And then you can bid the signs too, right? I mean, that could be a price.
Well, that's an unknown right now because my next item on the agenda is asking you all to authorize us to let an RFQ for a downtown informational kiosk, which is part of the, I knew that was part of the Shelbyville downtown um, improvement grant because it was in the write-up for the grant application. So that is on us. And I don't think, and I do not think twelve thousand dollars is gonna touch it. I may be wrong, but the, the ones we've uh, looked at and gotten quotes on are very pricey.
But that's, that's a, that's a separate obligation in the city.
Yes.
So add that to what Kay said, the kiosk, the services, professional services, and if signs cost more than twelve thousand.
Yeah. But as I understand it, we're just, we're just required to spend our portion, like if that kiosk is outrageous, we, we aren't required to put a kiosk and way, wayfinding signs up. We're just required to spend a certain dollar figure as our portion of that grant.
So that's not.
It's not necessarily a requirement that we do both of them. Like if they come back and they're super expensive, then, you know, we just have to spend a certain dollar figure for one either or items.
There's a set amount that you, that we're required to spend?
Yes, Kay, what was that, twelve thousand?
Well, uh, that's how much of a grant is, is city and grant, it per total of twelve. That's three thousand city, nine thousand grant.
That, that twelve thousand dollar figure is the dollar figure that we're required by the grant to pay for some downtown improvement.
But your single kiosk is not quite.
Well, there's a, there's a verbiage that I don't know where it is. I think it says something like two, some, two, two signs and two kiosks. Okay, here it is again. The grantee, so utilize grant funds to purchase and install up to four kiosk signs and four direction signs in downtown Shelbyville.
Up to that.
So, you know, I don't know what we'll get out of that, but thank you, Lori. Lori was prepared and I wasn't.
Well, neither was I.
Are we, are we required to, are a company to, uh, really sign this?
I can't answer that.
I can't answer that either. Scott left us with this project, so.
Is he the one that can answer?
He should be able to answer.
Have engineers who come and tell you.
Well, engineers are required for any municipality project over fifty thousand. But I, I was looking to see if I had a picture of what he has.
Is this the same chamber?
So we can go on either of these websites and, and check out their work, is that right?
You should be.
I can't say that I've done, but I have their, I have their proposals in my office if anybody's interested in seeing. One of the, and this is shifted to the kiosk, which is all part of it, but that's what kind of the thing we're looking at. See that? That's Shelbyville, Kentucky. Cause they sent us one that they had done and that had Shelbyville on it.
Where would it be stationed?
I don't know.
That's what the engineers.
Architects.
But we won't. We won't know the dollar figure from what we have from the grant until November or so after everyone finishes their projects. Is that correct?
How much funds is left in the pot, so to speak, for us to spend towards that? But my, my assumption is that it'll be less than ten thousand dollars that'll be left. I'd say I think it says.
The pageant said we had twelve thousand to work with.
Yeah, but thirty, thirty three hundred of it is already our match, right, Kay?
Three thousand forty three.
Is already our match portion. Of the, the other part, the nine thousand dollars, that's part of the grant funds that we gave to the others. So some of that nine thousand dollars will be spent. But then the one person that didn't take it, that money went back in the pot. So. Am I trying, am I making any sense? Okay.
No, I think the grant would have to be amended to rearrange any of this. This is how it is right now.
Yes, it.
I both thought this was in the packet or not, I not amend.
No, I didn't put it in there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
One last thing. Okay, so you had twenty people to come and say, I wanna improve my business. You ended up with eighteen. Why couldn't that been divided to make all twenty getting funds?
Well, the reason that we ended up with eighteen instead of twenty is we, we awarded to nineteen, which was the Habitat people. They were one of the twenty. So the only one that we did not award to was Glass Hollow Taverns. And we did award, they put in three submittals for, they own three different buildings. So we did award to Glass Hollow Taverns for two of their buildings. The main one that's gonna be the big restaurant and the harness shop around behind. But they also own a, a like office building maybe on East Depot Street. And just to look at it, it was not in that bad of repair. And they were asking for ten thousand dollars, which was the most that you could ask for, for all three of their buildings. So the committee that they put together to, you know, review the request just decided that let's give them for the two main buildings that they're working on, the ten thousand dollars. We gave them the most for both of those buildings and just decided to take that other one out. And it just so happened, you know, we went, I actually sat on that committee and we went through each request as they came to us. And it just so happened that at the end of them, we saw reason to give nineteen of them money. And the only one of them we didn't was the Glass Hollow Office Building on East Depot. And, you know, it just, that's just how. They got something, they got two somethings. We, we gave for two other buildings, we just didn't give for that one, so.
And they're using it. I mean, we give so much and then they have to put in so much.
They have to put in their part, yes.
You can see the awning going up, the painting of the buildings and all that really looks good. And the Glass House Tavern, they are really moving.
They're moving along, yes, sir. They sure are.
Really looks good, really looks good. Good question, anybody else?
If I remember correctly, when the grant, we amended the grant somewhere along the way a few months ago, saying that because we had so much interest in it, we wanted to fund all those.
That's right.
We changed the priorities on where we're gonna fund the owner's property instead of our kiosk, so.
That's right. And, but see, now that it's my understanding, and I may be miss, misspeaking again, if I am, I'll correct myself next time. But it's my understanding that we gave them all the funds, but then because the one person backed out, those funds are back in the pot. So we may get the benefit of that much money, which is like seven thousand dollars, I think.
Doing good work. Any other questions?
Well, we'll find out next month if I'm doing good work. I can tell you, that was wrong.
Everybody was tickled to death with all of the, all of the vendors, merchants up there.
It looks fantastic. I, I was looking at it today because we had this meeting and it, it really, I think it's made a good improvement.
The next item is appointments, the Safe and Affordable Housing Committee, one appointment. And I'd like to wait on that. I'd like to get some more information before we make an appointment on that, if that's all right, Lisa, when we do that.
You wanna take it off of the agenda? I mean, that's fine. I think the reason they were wanting it is because they're having trouble making quorum, but we can discuss it, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to discuss who the person is, yeah, that we're gonna put on there. Number twenty is the Shelbyville Housing Authority, one appointment. And Mr. Alan Gill is on there now. And I received a call from Mr. Tillman that he was a good board member. And I asked, I called Mr. Gill and talked to him and see if he'd like to serve again, and he said he would. So Alan Gill deserved one there. ADA Authority Board, did we have anybody for that tonight?
We, we, Brad McGee is already serving on there and I haven't called him, but I'm sure he'll be agreeable to be reappointed, so we can reappoint him. But we do have one open position and we're looking for somebody. It's kind of a specific requirement. They have to either have a disability or deal with someone who has a disability, advocate for someone who has a disability. So we are looking at someone, we're just waiting to hear back, so maybe we'll have a name for you next week.
Anybody have any candidates that please let Lisa know on that? Comments? Shelbyville Parks Board, we've got what, three members there?
You do have three members, all three members are eligible for reappointment. So I believe that that should be an easy one, we could just reappoint.
Did you have those members signed?
It's Tony Cornish, Mary Grace Phillips, and who's the third one? Stephen Taylor.
They should all begin to serve again.
Yes, sir, I'm sure they will.
All right, do we have any other business? Do we have any other announcements? Okay, let's adjourn.